Feel like we're making progress. Always makes me feel good.
See, on my PDF, I can draw all over my, you know, I can draw little flowers and, you know.
Wow.
I mean, no, I can't be.
And we're on. Well, welcome to the November 24th, 2020, meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen.
I don't think you're unmuted.
Oh, I guess I've got to unmute. Try this again. Welcome to...
Oh, Ellen, you have to get off audio. It sounds like Courtney, it sounds like it's...
It does. Mine's off.
Oh.
Technical difficulties.
Oh, no, it's fine.
Welcome to the November 24th, 2020, meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. With me here in person, we have Megan Birch-McMichael, Ellen Sturgis, Courtney Frescher, Jim Salvi, Denise Stempfowsky, and Maureen McKeon, and I'm Tom Ryan. So we're all here in person tonight. First order business will be public input. If anybody has public input, please raise your virtual hand or wave at me. Seeing none, we'll go on to chairman's comments. First off, everybody knows Thanksgiving's coming up, and on Thanksgiving, or really from November 26th through Saturday, the 28th, you can still participate in the Stowe Recreation Department Stowe Gobbler Virtual Race. Please remember that this year it is a virtual event, and please do not show up at the community park. As I'm sure everyone knows, with the holiday season upon us and COVID-19 cases increasing across the country, the Board of Health, the Governor, CDC, as well as the Department of Mass Public Health has made a number of recommendations for a safer holiday season. These recommendations are available on the Town of Stowe website. Please be smart and be safe over the Thanksgiving holiday. Reeds Across America is a nonprofit organization, and part of their mission is to remember our veterans by laying wreaths on the graves of our veterans at over 2,100 cemeteries across the country. Stowe is currently not one of these locations. A few individuals here in Stowe heard of this organization and wanted to honor the veterans buried here in Stowe. These individuals are working with the Veterans Agent, Cemetery Committee, and others to identify the veterans buried in Stowe. Because of COVID-19, it has been requested that things are kept simple. One way that the public can participate in this effort is by donating a 16-inch wreath and dropping it off at 453 Gray Road in Stowe by December 15th, 2020. No cash donations, please, wreaths only. On December 19th, 2020, which is Reeds Across America Day, a small group will meet at the cemetery and lay as many wreaths as are available. Currently, they have 30 wreaths with a goal of 457, which is the number of veterans we have buried here in town. And it would be nice to get one for each veteran. Additional information and details will be available when we get closer to December 19th. And in the interest of full disclosure, 453 Gray Road happens to be my address. This is not an official Stowe function, it is being run by my wife.
Okay.
And last but not least, I'm sad to announce that our longtime administrative assistant, Maureen McKeon, has recently accepted another position, and therefore, this will be her last meeting with us. It's been a pleasure working with Maureen all these years, and I will miss her wonderful attitude and willingness to always help out. Maureen, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you success and happiness in your new position. I have a little something for you here. It's very small, but since you're not going to be here around Christmas, I decided to go rogue. You can open that up and show everybody. It isn't booze. But thank you very much for all your hard work over the years, and I truly will miss you.
Thank you, I've learned a lot.
If I could just add something, because I was chair for a lot of the years that Maureen was here. Nobody cared more about helping the residents that morning than Maureen. Always tried to go above and beyond and help everyone call, and I really appreciate that. Always framing after every question.
Going to be missed. All right. And we get to check off a third one, because there are no appointments tonight. So, next up, we have possible discussion or discussion and possible votes. The first item is about the cane land, and for this, I'm going to turn it over to Denise.
So I can certainly start. We do have members of the Cane Land Trails System and Gleesondale Steering Committee on the meeting. I believe they came back to see you, or came to see you back in the early spring before COVID to talk about the project. They've been making progress, I've met with them a few times. They are getting ready to submit a proposal to the CPC for some CPA funding to really get their project underway. The CPC request is not exorbitant at all. I think they're looking for $30,000 from the CPC for some engineering work and a few components. Most of the work that they're doing is in-kind donations, they're doing a lot of the volunteer work, they're preparing the land. I think it's a great proposal, I think it will be great for that area. And I would, I'm sure there are some members that want to speak to it, but I would ask that the board support the project going forward to CPC. Obviously, it still has a ways to go, it still has to go through the vetting process, town meeting. But I think it's worth exploring at this point and seeing if we can get some funding to add some recreational space down there. And if anyone from the Steering Committee would like to speak, that would be the town.
Please raise your hand or wave at me. Oh, Maura.
Hi.
Maura.
Hi, I'm Maura.
I think you are Maura. I think you are Maura.
I'd like to answer any questions you have, but we're really excited that the Steering Committee's been working on this for a lot longer than I've been on the Steering Committee, and I've been here for two years. And we're really excited to have a stage where we can, you know, walk to conservation land in our neighborhood and enjoy the woods. So, really hope that you'll support the project, and if there's anything we can do to answer your questions, I know we more than half the town.
So I did just put up a map of the proposed trail, where it would go on the property, just so folks can see that.
There it is. Any questions and comments from the board?
I'll comment. I first saw this project taking shape when I was on the Conservation Commission, and I am in favor of supporting any requests, any reasonable requests.
That's better than any. Kim?
I remember the meeting in December 2019, I remember we were down in the Whitney Room. And it was a very good meeting, and we urged the residents to kind of work with the town administrator and the town. Very, very glad to see it come to fruition. I have to compliment whoever wrote this memo. I realize it's an updated memo from the one we got before, but it's terrific. Somebody knows the lost art of memo writing, and told me everything I needed to know. I see you dealt with probably the most difficult question, which was the access. It seems like you're dealing with it very reasonably. I'd like to know more detail about what you have in mind on the boardwalk, which seems like the next most complicated thing, but if you're not prepared to talk about that, that's fine. Seems like you've done some work on that, too.
Kathy and I think Alyssa are around here, too. They might be able to answer one of your technical questions about the boardwalk. I don't know if they want to chime in.
Well, I can speak, I'm Alyssa. We actually are considering two boardwalks right now. One goes over a piece of wetland, and the other is on the entrance ramp and goes over culvert. So the one that goes over the wetland would be mounted on a irrigated plastic pipe, and it would consist of joists and cross rail floorboards, very simple. The one that goes over the culvert is probably going to be a little more complicated because of the, probably supports those something in the ground, but we have not gotten a design for it yet. Is that how?
Yep, that answers my questions, thank you very much, and thank you for all your work on this.
Any other comments, questions? It sounds like a good project to me right now. Always, is this something that we need to take action on, or?
So, um, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
People in the audience, if you have time for comments from people in the audience? So my name is Charles Bell, this is my wife, Leslie. We're the largest abutters to this project, and we're the lot directly to the south in the map she just showed you. And we strongly supported the project, and I think everyone probably here thinks that we still strongly support the project, because we do, we have common, we have very similar property. We enjoy it very much, we think that the town should have access to that property. Well, we have some problems with the project as it's set up right now, and I'm kind of concerned that we might take a step that we're not ready to take yet. So we just kind of glossed over the access, the boardwalk she's talking about that they haven't figured out yet. Well, that is, the plan is to run from the complete left of our 200-foot frontage to the complete right of our 200-feet frontage with a boardwalk, because there's a bank, our land is down probably four, six feet below the road at every point. So there's a bank there that you have to put a structure on for people to be able to access. So right now, the plan is to have everybody walk on a boardwalk across the front of our property. And it also, the plan shows a chain link fence around it, which obviously, there needs to be some fence, because the boardwalk would be four feet in the air at places, or more. And so we're talking about a 10-foot structure possibly across the entire front of our property, so that people can have access to this path. I just, the one member of this committee asked us how we felt about that, and we told them exactly how we felt about that. We have been, you know, active participants in town for 26 years. We have been, we've let numerous people use our property to get to the cane land, to use our property. People have ridden snowmobiles, dirt bikes, ATVs across from other properties to this property, which I know won't be part of the plan going forward, but we're really, we really are not, like, selfish about this whole thing. But if any of you guys could picture having a structure running from the entire, across the entire front of your yard as being the proposal so that people can have a 15-minute walk in the woods, there's some kind of imbalance there. I also feel like the places where the access point, despite having Officer Solisi and someone from Public Works come out and say it's the best option, it probably is, it might be the best option for free, or for low cost, but it's a lousy option. We drop our kids off, we drop our kids off at the bus every morning there, and it's a very dangerous place. The current plan is to have people parking. So we've created the space. Gleesondale is like a real mixed neighborhood, and we've got this, we've turned this field of brambles and...
Trash.
Trash into a, into a field of horses, and now we're talking about putting a structure across the front of it. You've got an old classic, you've got an old historical church there, that is now somebody's home. You're talking about turning its front yard into a parking lot, I don't know if they're measures. Cars would be 20 feet from their front steps, is what the plan for parking is for the... But I think that it's only part of the way you thought through. It needs to be sort of finished. The idea that the town owns the front of everybody's property, I accept and welcome. I think it's important to have that common frontage for everybody's house. But to take someone's own use away from them being able to just see out there front of their property clearly seems like it takes an extraordinary step, and an extraordinary need. And so to focus on one family and do it to them and take away that, so that people can have a 15-minute trail, and I walked that, a 15-minute trail in the woods. And we haven't discussed who's going to do it, we don't have any good estimate on how many people are going. So there's that whole aspect of the impact to us, but I'm trying to bring up at the same time the aspect of the impacts to the community, because you're taking some historical elements, fields that people played baseball, that is that, that field is a field people played baseball then as kids, people who still live here. And you're, you're putting a barrier across it. And then, so I'm trying to bring up what it does for the area, I think it detracts from the area, not adds. And then the third aspect is, I don't think it's safe. What I just mentioned is that intersection's a terrible intersection. We're talking about putting a boardwalk up halfway up inside the guardrail. So anybody walking north of 62 is going to get on that boardwalk and then dead-end at this trail and have to jump out onto 62 over a guardrail. And it's a really lousy guardrail, because people come onto that road from Arm Road, Love Arm Road, they're looking over their left shoulder to see whether something's coming. It's actually back over their left shoulder to see when something's coming. And most people don't stop, they just yield, and they go flying, where they might even look. So if someone's stepping out over that guardrail and, and cane land, it's a dangerous thing. So it just, it just is mostly thought out, and it's a really good project. But it needs to be finished thought out, I think, you know...
The access point, the access point needs to be evaluated more closely.
I think if we had sidewalks, if we had those sidewalks that we're talking about someday doing in this part of town, that that would like, that would answer it. I think if you had, if you let, if you broke the guardrail up at cane land and let people go down to park down there, it's normally a couple cars, because it's a short enough trail. That's been viewed as just too expensive, but there's got to be something else. It just can't be this, this, this dangerous wall, this little prison wall across our front yard.
Yep, I think, I think from the sounds of it right now...
I guess that's...
You're in favor of the project, but you, you think it needs some more thought process to it. Denise, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment, and then you know both Maura, and I think Kathy wanted to comment. So that's, that's... So that's actually why the plan is to hire an engineer, is to go out and do a site survey and prepare some proposals on the best and safest process and access point in that area. I think quite frankly, when police and highway said that that was the best approach, it, in that area, it does appear to be the safest way to gain access to that area. But again, an engineer, we will have, we will have a professional provide that information to us.
Maura?
Just to clarify a couple things, Kathy, Alyssa, and she's in a, in a project, if I'm, if I'm mislooking, but there's no end as part of the plan, the boardwalk, if you want, there's no plan for parking. If you want to use the trail, you have to walk there, there's no parking. You don't have to jump over the guardrail. Mike Solisi, the fire chief of Valerie, who left a position on the plane and board went out there, and they agreed that it was the safest point for entry, because there is a place where the guardrail ends, and you can walk out and walk around, so nobody would be jumping over the guardrail unless they so choose, which I would never tell anyone to do.
So Maura, in your plans, it shows the names, is my concern. Your plan actually shows a chain link fence. It says, if you look at the plan, it was published with this, with this fabulous thing. It says chain link fence, so any proposal might include a chain link fence.
Maybe that's the older map, I'm not sure. This is dated October 15th.
And it was published with the, with the, so that's one thing. The other thing is it doesn't show the boardwalk continuing to the other end of the, the access on Charlie's property, or Vinnie's property. Doesn't show it going over there flower beds and stuff to get, you'd actually have to exit on your driveway to get to the end of that guardrail. So I know that's probably what you think you were trying to do, but you, the materials we're looking at don't indicate that, so if that's the case, that's a step in the right direction, and I appreciate that you were looking after those things along the way.
Yeah, and I can just add one thing, this is Kathy's fair conservation coordinator. Valerie and I and the Gleesondale Committee spent a fair bit of time down there looking at that stretch along your frontage. I don't have that plan in front of me that you have, but my understanding, and again, this will be confirmed by the engineering plans, is that there is no plan to put a boardwalk along that entire frontage. There's only a very short section of boardwalk that's, I mean, needed where culvert, and I know, you know, the culvert empties out from under the road, and otherwise, the path would just run right along the grade. So it suggests where that culvert is, where it would be located, because you don't have to...
The grade is about this, that you'd be walking along, so they, you know, you'd walk along.
It'll, there'll have to be a little bit of fill to bring that level, but not a lot. And then the boardwalk would be needed at the culvert crossing. You know, again, the plans will show that, and obviously, you guys will be welcome to participate in reviewing those, and we'll want your comments on that.
Are there any more comments or questions from in here? Mr. and Mrs. Bell, you know, I'm glad you brought that stuff up, and I'm sure you're willing to work with the folks down there, so. And it sounds like they're planning on keeping you involved, so. It doesn't look like we actually have to take any action on this. So unless there are any other comments or questions from the audience, I'll move on.
Can I just, I know that you don't need to take action on it tonight. These guys have been working for a long time, and I think that they would like to hear that the selectmen are supporting them moving forward. We are reaching the point now where we're going to start to need to spend some real money on design, you know, make a proposal to the CPC. So I think that they just want to know that the selectmen continue to support this effort as they move forward.
Kim?
No, I was going like this, anybody else want to say something? I certainly, I haven't heard anything that makes me want to stop the process. I understand the Bell's concerns. It sounds to me like we're in the middle of a process, we haven't hired an engineer yet. And it sounds like appropriately, an important focus would be to minimize any kind of disturbance to neighbors. But I certainly haven't heard anything here that, everything I've heard on the whole is here, that I'm glad this is covered, that's just it.
Courtney?
I would agree with what Jim said, I would, I would just say to take special care in the design process to look at everybody's needs, and strike the best choice that will, will take care to not do something unfair to a particular individual or, but I, I'm still in support. I think it's a great project, and people work really hard to come up with the ideas and to bring it this far, I think it's great.
Ellen?
Well, I haven't been around for this, you guys are more up to speed on it, but I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that it goes to CPC sounding like it's a done deal, and I really want to make sure the abutters, I mean, for a small property, to me, it's really critical that the abutters are satisfied that this is not going to totally impact their property. So that's, that's my only hesitation in supporting it at this point.
Can I just comment on that? So obviously CPC will need to authorize the funding to have the engineering work done. So we are still a long way off from the project, and we will certainly keep the bells in the loop. I think the Gleesondale Steering Committee is very active and wants to have a fully inclusive project, and they really need the CPC funding in order to move forward. So it is not a done deal just because the funding is coming out, but this will actually give us the right direction to move in.
May provide a much better solution, hopefully.
Right.
As the liaison to CPC, I'll be, they're meeting in the beginning of December, and then I'll go see the full application, and have you report on the, the next night.
Megan?
I don't have anything to say that has already been said. So yes, I'm in supportive, I'm in support of the project, for sure, but I do think that the abutters need to be kept in the loop, for sure. But I also think that the funding needs to happen so that they can move to that next step, because we won't be able to actually be able to visualize anything until we get to that point, so. If we need to get to that point.
Well said, I concur. So, so basically...
If folks can speak up, they're having a hard time hearing us, and I, it could be our internet connection here in the building tonight, but...
So Kathy, to answer your question, oop. Looks like I just cracked.
It, it seems to say that, but it comes right back, so just keep talking.
Yeah, well, and then the microphones are still supposed to be picking up for...
Well, I can certainly turn on the speakers of my audio if we need to. I could plug it in, I'm gonna be off here from Kathy.
Yeah, it says it's connecting. And it looks like I'm back.
Oh, my goodness.
The host muted everyone.
But you're muted still, so, okay.
And it looks like I'm back.
Okay, great.
Kathy, I think to answer your question, the board is generally supportive of this. We are concerned about the Bell's and their concerns, and probably the next step is looking at the engineering, and, you know, then people will have a much better idea of actually what, what is going to be finally proposed, so. Is that good enough for you?
Thank you.
I know, I get them. Okay, all right.
All right. Moving on, modification of the Gleesondale Historic District Study Committee. And this is something that's been proposed by the Planning Board, relative to the Gleesondale Historic, Local Historic Committee. And Jesse's not available tonight. But basically, what is being proposed is, as they've been having difficulty getting a quorum of seven people, as outlined when we authorized the original committee, they're asking that we allow a reduction in the committee from seven members to five, as I recall. So, we have any questions, discussion about that?
Sounds very straightforward.
Yeah.
Sounds pretty straightforward to me.
Five seems like a good number.
Five seems like a great number, so it's not too small.
Works for us.
Works, works for, all right. I'm ready for motion.
I just have one question, I'll have to labor it. The original motion on this, and this hints at it, had a whole bunch of ex officio positions. As we reduce it, do we have to do anything with that? Just say, is it good enough to just say, reduce from seven to five? Or do we have to say, remove it, or adjusting certain ex officio positions?
No, because I assume you're not planning to adjust the ex officio positions, you're just lowering the voting membership from seven to five. So you shouldn't have to adjust the ex officios at all.
So they'll still technically be on it unless they don't apply, if it was to be applied?
Correct.
Got it?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Great.
Anybody might have a motion?
I move to reduce the number of members on the Gleesondale Local Historic District Study Committee from seven to five.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous? Next, common vitler and class two license renewals. Now, Maureen, you said that there were some issues with some of the applications. Have those all been straightened out?
We are down to one. There is one that we're still waiting on paperwork for. My recommendation to you all would be to vote the licenses contingent upon the selectman's office receiving all necessary documentation, so that when it comes in, we could release the license based on your sort of provisional approval this evening. But there, every one has complied except for the one we're just waiting on.
Which, you don't tell me which one, but which section is it?
Common vic.
Okay, great.
All right, this is relatively pro forma, as we don't have any other issues. I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Hold on, I'm just writing. Okay. I move to renew the town's common vitler licenses for the following businesses for 2021, contingent upon the selectman's office receiving the appropriate paperwork. Dunkin' Donuts at Stowe Golf Station, 626 Great Road. Stowe Cafe, 118 Great Road. Delta Epsilon Incorporated, DBA Stowe House of Pizza, 156 Great Road. Stowe LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts at Stowe Shopping Plaza, 117 Great Road. And Emma's Cafe, 117 Great Road, Stowe, Massachusetts, 01775.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening, I was looking at these. It's, you did say contingent upon.
Yep, yes, yep, I do. I'm going to do the second set.
Sure, then we can just pass them all around.
Sure.
To get signed.
I move to renew the town's class two licenses for the following businesses for 2021. Patterson Auto Body, Inc., 18 Great Road. Import Export of Boston, 8 Whitman Street, Great Road. Great Road Fuels, 368 Great Road. Richard Presty Chapel Partners Incorporated, 102 Great Road. BGL Automotive Corp., DBA Hudson Road Auto, Inc., 383 Hudson Road. Dennis Paul Scafidi, Infinite Details and Accessories, 102 Great Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we have to fit all of us on these licenses, isn't it?
Yeah. The green batches, I got more room.
Okay.
Thank you. Just try and fit it where, oh, I see.
Pass these around this way.
Two of them.
Probably something, they need the middle. I don't know what to do with.
Oh, all right, great. Did get a report from Stowe TV watchers that they can hear us fine.
Excellent.
Hold off, hold off a minute. Courtney, go back this way now. Jim won't know what to do with too many of them.
It's a different kind of small.
For doing all these, I always wanted to just get one of the stamps.
Courtney missed one. Oh, it's stuck together. I'll come up. Okay. Let you one, Tom comes around. I don't know where to.
Do you want me to just give that one back to Courtney?
Thank you. You all have such nice signatures.
Good, it doesn't make you fall around.
Does anybody mind if I start with the mentioning the tri-town? I think as you guys all know, we received a letter from the Neshova Regional School District after the last tri-town meeting. They would like changes, and they're not, not very happy with the process.
May I make one small comment? So the letter came in after the October meeting, not the November meeting. So we have had a meeting since this letter came out.
The tri-town has had a meeting, yeah.
Yes, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
And so I figured what we should probably do is address the letter, make sure we at least have a conversation, make sure we're all on the same page. After our last meeting, I think we were all pretty, pretty much in agreement. And the, basically, it sounds like the school committee and the Neshova Regional School District would like to put together another meeting to discuss how to run the meeting.
That is what it sounds like, Tom.
You know, some of this, you know, I've been thinking about it quite a bit. My recollection, and Jim, you've been around quite a while too, and so have you, Ellen. But my recollection is that when the tri-town first started, it was for the three towns to get together to try to understand what each of the towns' position was relative to shared interests, which most of the, most of it was the schools. After any number of meetings, eventually, the school district was invited to join as part of it in order to try to improve communication. However, they, you know, it wasn't their meeting, it was the three towns' meetings to try to make sure that we were all on the same page. Back twenty-some-odd years ago, there were some rather contentious meetings. There was information that wasn't coming out, and it, I'll refer to it as the bad old days before we ended up, you know, I'll say getting more information out of the school district, and, you know, that ended up leading to finding some other issues that I'm not going to go into at this point. But it turned out to be a fairly contentious issue, but most of it, it sent it, you know, the three towns were trying to understand what each of the towns' positions was relative to, in a lot of cases, it was the budget, you know, more than anything else. Because for the most part, back then at least, the towns weren't interested in trying to tell the school district how to run a school district. It's just that it was more expensive than we would have liked. Now, I'm seeing some, some different issues coming up, and I, I don't want to get, personally, I don't want to get involved in trying to run a school district. However, you know, there may be any number of people that do have different concerns. There, I'm sure there are going to be issues that come up relative to financing. And if we're not happy with some of that, we'll probably have some say in it. But for the most part, our limitation for what we can do with the school district is to not support their budget. And that's pretty much, you know, the school district or the school committee members are elected members. They are pretty much along, you know, they're on the same par as we are. We, they don't report to us. They report to the people in town that voted for them. And I do not envy their position right now with all of the issues relative to COVID. So. Well, the, you know, so I suppose with my brief version of history, I'll, I'll open it up a little bit for a bit of a discussion. Megan?
Sorry, so Ellen and I were, or Ellen came to the tri-town meeting there as well. I think that a couple of takeaways from that meeting are that tempers are still really high. I feel like people are still looking for solutions that they are not getting the answers to that they want. I think one of the things that I said in the meeting is, you know, what, what sort of is the end all be all? What's the end game for having us involved? Like, what, what are people really thinking is going to happen? And I, I was asking that of the other selectmen for being in this conversation with them. You know, what, what do they think can happen? Because as far as I'm concerned, we as a select board are not going to overturn the, you know, the school, the school district to say that you can go back to school. So I think having the same conversation over and over and over again is just continuing to inflame tempers of people. We are not the people to make that decision. I was very clear in the first tri-town meeting that we had, that we are not the people. I said again, in the second tri-town meeting, I don't believe that we are the people after we had had the conversation. And to my point, or to, what my feeling is, and I believe I said this to Ellen, is that I don't even know that unless there is some kind of change made in the format of the meeting, whether or not it is beneficial for us to continue attending. Because this last meeting, we were provided no information up ahead of town. I was expected to respond to things on an agenda that I had no background for. It would be like us showing up to a selectman's meeting with this. Here, let's have conversations about stuff. Let's talk about the cane land without having whatever.
The school committee wasn't even there, right?
The school committee wasn't there because they made a conscious effort, or a conscious decision, sorry, not effort. They made a conscious decision to not attend. They didn't feel like it was a productive conversation, the first one, and so they just didn't come to the second one. The argument from the other selectmen is, well, you know, you just took your ball and went home because you didn't get what you wanted. I can understand having that reaction. However, I don't share that reaction, because I don't feel, again, that it was a productive conversation. And then we were asked to respond to the survey, but I was being asked to respond to someone's interpretation of a survey without being provided with that data ahead of time. Do you know what I mean? So it was sort of like, if this is the way we're going to keep running the meetings, I don't want to go. Sorry, but I, I don't want to go. And if this is, I don't know. So maybe Ellen wants to speak to other things. I think she had a lot of good points in the meeting. It was helpful to me, given the fact that I've only been in this position for a few months, to have someone who has actually had this job before and has had experience to be able to provide some of that background. But anyway, that's all I got.
I, I would just add, I mean, I, I came to the conclusion, I didn't attend the first one, never watched the tape because I heard enough, I didn't want to know. But I think it's, it's totally unclear, you know, there's clearly agendas going on. It's not the tri-town of old that I remember in terms of what you were talking about. You know, we really were focused on, you know, trying to understand the three towns' individual challenges and particularly financial, like implications for, for budgets. So a lot of the things that, that were brought up, in my opinion, came because they couldn't get answers from the school district, which is a problem. But you don't come to tri-town because you can't get answers from the school district. It's, it's not, you know, I mean, it was a sort of reverse taking your ball and going home. It's like, well, you can keep bringing it up, but it's not, this is not a place for you to get a resolution on it. So I would, I mean, I strongly suggest we take a break from, from the tri-town. We can either, as our own board, have a discussion, which, I mean, because even though I don't really, I didn't think it was appropriate that the school committee's proposal was, was such. It is, to me, what needs to happen. We need to have an agreement across the three towns. What is the purpose of tri-town? And we can't have it, that discussion during a meeting because tempers are too high. And it's been, right now, with all the, with the COVID-related issues, you know, sixty-five people coming again to a call that's not about the school district, I mean, per se. That's a problem. People, I think now residents are getting an expectation that it's going to be resolving issues, that it's not, that's not where the issues are going to be resolved. And if they have issues with the school district, talk to your school committee reps. Unfortunately, those folks, I, I, I agree, they're in a tough position this year, but.
They can't win, no matter what they do.
That's right.
So I feel bad for them.
But they are elected, they are not, I mean, the disparaging comments by a letter in the paper about people, like a little, small group, it's like, no, they were elected just like we were, as you said. And that's where the concerns need to go. So I, I would strongly suggest that we as a board agree that we're not sending Megan, we're not sending Denise. We take a break from the next couple of meetings until we're ready to have a budget discussion. But I think right now, maybe it goes to the town administrators to, to, and, yeah.
So I just want to comment on a few things. So, I mean, I would agree wholeheartedly. Quite frankly, that's five hours of my life that we talked about the same thing and nothing was resolved. It, it just keeps going around in circles, and I agree, they were talking about data and analytics and evaluating numbers and figures, and we're all like, what are you? And he's like, what was on the website? It's on the school's website if you go look for it. I mean, but that's not the way to conduct a meeting, in my opinion. I don't see the benefit, quite frankly. The only matter that I think should have been discussed, which tri-town is for, was to discuss this whole Neshova EMS cadet program. That is a true tri-town discussion, and then no one wanted to talk about it because they were all so furious about the remote and everything else.
Well, and they, and then they, they just kept bringing up the fact that the school committee, well, the school committee's not here, the administration's not here. It's like, they don't need to be here to have this part of the conversation. Like, we, this is why we are in this meeting. But it just, it was too, it's just people are too spun, I, I mean.
So I do, sorry, so I do have a meeting scheduled on Wednesday. It was just scheduled today with my two counterparts and work to discuss preliminary budget information. I am happy to have monthly meetings in that format. I do think, you know, those are the formats where we can be a little more candid. We can sort of have those tough discussions and say, this number's not going to work for us. You need to, you know, hashing those things out in public during a pandemic with this whole remote and hybrid, it's just never going to work, in my opinion. So I'm happy to meet regularly with them, report to this board, answer questions that I can regarding the school and the other towns. But I, I just agree, I think there's no benefit at this point to continue with this format.
Jim?
I think there's two issues. I think one is short-term and one is long-term. Short-term issue is that tri-town seems like it has devolved into a discussion by select board members about issues within the jurisdiction of the school committee, now without even the school committee participating. So it makes complete sense to me to take a break from that. It seems pointless. I'm not that concerned about that, though. What I am a little more concerned about is as we get deeper into budget season. Tri-town does have a role. To be honest, it's not as important as the role of the town administrator, meeting with the other town administrators and superintendent. She needs to stay on top of, is the number seven percent or four percent? Because that makes or breaks her budget. And tri-town's never been the way we get that information. But tri-town has a role. And if it continues, and that's an if, I'd be perfectly happy to see tri-town get blown up. Because in the past ten years, Ellen's. Because in the past 10 years, Ellen, actually, this isn't that a typical. Selectmen grandstanding, using it as an opportunity to grandstand. I'm not going to say it happens all the time, but it definitely happens. Even some Stow selectmen have participated in that. Often when you can't get good information out of the school committee, that's, that's what happens. But I'd be happy to see it get blown up. But if it continues, I don't want it to get layered with process. The school committee has shown a tendency recently to want a very formal question-and-answer process. I don't like that. And I think tri-town has always been the antithesis of that. And that has been perhaps one and only virtue. So if it's going to continue, let's keep that one and only virtue. That's it.
I can, I mean, I can see the benefit for that, for sure, in a non-COVID time.
Yes.
In a, we're having a sit-down with coffee, it's a small group of us, and we are hashing this out in a public meeting, but like.
And I said to Denise, if I'll say here, you want to reduce the grandstanding, maybe not eliminate, but reduce it, don't tell about it. Back when we were just meeting in a kitchen in a community center with cookies and cider, no TV, there were very good discussions. So.
It's, it, it has been a education in posturing, I will say. It has been fascinating to watch how, and myself included. I mean, granted.
It is a legitimate function for a selectman. The dirty little secret is that we don't really have that much power over stuff that matters. But we can persuade ourselves that we act as a voice for certain people. And we, we do that. And so I don't begrudge somebody doing this, I'm just that it can go too far, like any other thing. I'm with you on, on taking a break. But if, if it continues, let's just keep it to its productive nature, not this overly layered thing with process.
Do we need, so process-wise for this, for us taking a break, do we need to take a vote probably that we've decided to do that? Or what, what do you want from us, Denise?
Um, I would recommend yes, more so to support you as being the representative.
Or just not showing up.
You know, if the board chooses that that's what we do, we, you take that vote and then we're fine with it.
We're not sending a representative.
Yes, we, we will not participate until, um, you know, not that there's structure, but there are, you know, relevant topics on an agenda that we will participate in. Or when there's a budget presentation, um, I mean, I think that's a good tri-town, you know, so that the school committee's not presenting a budget to three towns. Let them present it once and answer the questions. But I, I, so I think just to help your position, because I know, I, I found that in both meetings, actually, you know, you kept trying to relay that, you have the conversation with the board, it's the sense of the whole board. And I don't think that was registering, quite frankly. So I think it would be helpful to, you know, make the point known, let the other towns know that, you know, this is our position for right now.
So I'll make a motion.
A quick, a quick comment. I'm curious if you think this is the time while you're meeting with the other town administrators and the superintendent to consider in your small group what the format might be in future, you know, does that make sense? With no particular hurry, but just to, to consider if we're going to continue with tri-town, if tri-town, but continue, as you just said, for particular uses, if there were a format.
So I can certainly bring that up. I will tell you, from what I've been told, there are some of the same concerns from members that attend tri-town, that attend, that will attend this small meeting, that have some concerns about agendas and topics and discussion items. So I can bring it up. I don't know how open they will be to discuss that. I think, I don't know what's happened, I don't know what's happened across the other towns. But there's definitely deeper issues, I think, going on. I think there's some mistrust out there on both sides of the fence, not involving Stow. But it, it's definitely running deep right now, and everyone is just overly sensitive and taking it very personal. So, um, I, I think it was even a stretch to get this meeting scheduled for next week.
I'm also, I'm, I'm not convinced that the other town administrators have or have ever had the ability to speak for their selectmen or influence what they do or even have a sense of the past, Denise is building with us. I mean, I live there, but I, I, I have always had the impression that they have outliers that they just can't control.
You know, I, I think some of it, you know, it comes out of a frustration, as you said, as far as getting information. I share that frustration. I think that, you know, we need to have some conversations with the school administration. I've asked Denise to try to set up a meeting with Megan, myself, the chair of the school committee, and the superintendent. We had one scheduled a few weeks ago. It, uh, due to unforeseen circumstances, didn't come off. But what we'd like to do is essentially, you know, have a discussion about how we can get the information that we're asking for in a timely fashion.
On coronavirus?
Not, not just coronavirus. But, you know, there, there is information that Denise has asked for. There, that hasn't come yet, it's been promised, it's coming. You know, so it, I, I don't want to, I don't want to beat that stuff to death. But what I want to do is, I want to try to, you know, have a discussion so that we don't get back to the bad old days, as I call them, where everybody's just yelling and screaming and, um, you know, and I, I remember days when, you know, I went to the tri-towns, and I haven't been in 10 years, except for once or twice. Way back, I, I was actually working back and forth with my colleagues on the FinCom, trying to get, you know, this is what I'm seeing. Do you see the same thing? Do we agree? And, you know, it, it was a very collaborative thing.
I just want to push back on that a tiny bit, and then I'm ready to make a motion. I, I respect the jurisdiction of separately elected boards, whether they are here in town or at the regional level. And there are some issues that cross jurisdictions and boards. The budget, school budget is definitely one of those issues. Arguably coronavirus is one of those issues. But then there are issues that don't cross jurisdictions and boards. I find whether the high school is remote or hybrid, or the school is one of those issues that doesn't cross jurisdictions. And just as if our school committee reps barged into a random library building committee meeting and started throwing their weight around, I would be perplexed. And there may be sharp words. I'm not surprised that they feel the same way. I wish they would open their lines of communication and put pressure on us, but I'm not surprised by that. That, that's all I want to say. I don't want to, the budget's one thing, Tom, always has been.
And, and the thing is, it's, it, basically, it's open communication. You know, so that we can, we can have a rational discussion without, you know, yelling and screaming. I do not have any interest in beating up on the school committee, especially at a tri-town meeting. So, you know, it's, but if, if we're not, if Denise has asked for information and the other town administrators have asked for it, should be able to get together. We're all asking for the same stuff, why can't we get a hang?
I just want to make one point. So, I mean, I do feel that I have very good communication with the superintendent. I think, you know, her and I have met in person, we've had a few virtual meetings. I had a wonderful meeting with our four school committee reps virtually, um, two weeks ago now. They were very receptive, they were very open, they were very willing to work. So I really, I think, I think this whole issue right now with the information that's been requested, I think it goes to the bigger tri-town issue. I think it was sort of lumped into the first meeting. I think they feel that there's an underlying reason that things are being asked for, that it's being done, you know, discreetly for some unknown purpose. I don't think they are just withholding information. I really do think they feel that it's all tied into this whole attack, if you will. Because it came up at that meeting, and then I happened to follow it up the next day, just asking about it. And, um, so I don't think they're purposely withholding it. I just feel like it's all lumped into this larger issue. I, I would expect that that's part of what our meeting is on Wednesday, is to actually discuss that information with all of us at once.
So I will move to authorize our selectmen liaison to tri-town to not go through tri-town meetings at her discretion and to begin going to tri-town meetings again at her discretion after consultation with the town administrator.
Second.
Can you add, can you answer that motion?
Oh, yes, she doesn't have to either.
And not to authorize the town administrator, who must go.
Take it back.
Yes, I, I will take that as a friendly amendment, that the town administrator also does not, the authorized her not to go.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, thanks, everyone.
One of the best Christmas gifts you could get.
There you go, Thanksgiving early, there you go.
When are we going to do on December 12th, or whatever their next meeting is?
I'll tell you.
What are the selectmen's meeting calendar? Do we have to put that on, Denise?
Uh, no, this was Maureen who put this on.
Oh, Maureen who put this on, all right. Basically, it's the second and fourth Tuesdays. Everybody's good with that? All right.
Oh, great, I have to make the motion.
We need a motion?
I personally don't think you need a motion on your meeting dates, but.
Is it tradition?
No, question no.
So I'm, I'm, I'm good with them.
It hasn't changed, is basically all we're doing is confirming we're staying on the same schedule.
Yeah, and probably the, you know, the only thing is, and it's basically, you know, meetings unless, second and fourth, unless otherwise posted, and one meeting in December instead of two.
Perfect.
I think this is just a chance for, if you know you got a big vacation, like there was one where I knew I was going to go for a month. So my chance to say, hey, everybody, I love you guys a lot.
Um, do we?
What's that?
The in-person versus virtual attendance.
Oh.
That, Denise has to be put on there.
Right, yes.
That's why I got confused.
There you go.
I get easily confused.
Yep, so just in chatting with, actually Megan and Ellen both brought up, um, the in-person meetings. Obviously, COVID numbers are on the rise. You know, many towns have not resumed any in-person meetings. It was more of a discussion of if you're comfortable still coming in person, if you wanted to do some sort of hybrid here, that some are in-person, some are home. It was really just a discussion amongst yourselves on how you feel personally about attending these meetings in person.
So since I brought it up for myself, um, I think for the December meeting, I'm going to do virtual. Because I, being in retail, I just feel like my, my exposure is just so much higher at this point. And we are in the room together for over an hour. And so for me, I just feel like it's a safer bet for me to go virtual. And then just see where the numbers are at, starting in January, whether or not I go back. But, yeah, so I think that's, that's my decision for the one December meeting that we have as of right now.
Ellen?
I, I've actually been thinking about it more about our modeling good behavior and whether we should be, uh, just, you know, we're, we're trying to encourage our communities, our neighbors to, you know, try to bring these numbers down, which means doing less and less, and if this isn't required, I, I miss it. I mean, I like being here, it's a nice chance to actually see you guys in person and have, you know, informal beginning and ending kind of things. But I do feel a little like I should be more responsible as a select board. So I, I mean, I was thinking maybe hybrid and coming sometimes and not coming the other time. But I haven't gotten, I'm just interested in what you guys are thinking.
I think we should make more of an effort not to have all five of us here, like we, like we are feeling tired. I would probably start switching off. I, uh, I'm in a slightly unique position. I hear much better here. I can't use the hearing aid at home because I get feedback from the speakers on the computer. But for some reason here, I don't, and I can use the hearing aid. So I, for that reason, why don't I come in? But I will probably start switching off. And if we want to do some sort of formal rotation, you know, like if somebody wants, if somebody says, hey, I haven't been, actually been to a meeting in a while, do you want to switch off with me? That's fine, I think we can figure that out. But I do think we should start not having all five of us here.
That all makes sense to me. And I'm, and I'm fine with it. I, I was, I, you know, for personal reasons, sometimes my, my energy is such that I'd just be happy to not have to mobilize to come out to a meeting.
I agree.
I, I really enjoy being here in person.
Tonight was one of those nights, actually.
Yeah, me too. You know, and I just didn't want to, like, call everybody and say, hi, I'm going to change a plan, you know, that's a big deal. But, um, so I'm happy to switch off, I'm happy to, you know, try whatever makes sense to us.
What are the, well, Maureen won't be worse, but what are your?
Oh, I don't mind. Quite frankly, it's easier for me where I'm here during the day to just stay. I feel like, I feel like when I go home for the meetings, I, I get lazy and I'm, you know, not that I'm not participating, but it's just me, I'm much more focused here on, in the game. So I would plan to just be here anyways, I mean, unless there's something came up or, but I have no problem being here in person. I feel like if you do sort of alternate or even go down to three, you could very easily space the room out so that there's, I mean, there's plenty of room, I think, between everybody. But it would be a nicer setting if there's sort of just four of us and possibly a fifth. So I think that would work fine, but no, I, I don't have any concerns, but so, but thank you.
We also think Zoom will be helpful for, as we head into snow season, too.
What do you think, Tom?
I, I'm, I'm actually, you know, I feel kind of the same way Denise does, right? It really helps me to focus here as chair. One of the things that I, I think I've really appreciated is everybody being, I think, very supportive of everybody else that, you know, yes, when I traveled, I didn't show up. Other people, same thing, if not feeling well, you know, I got, I got the sniffles, I'm not going to show up. And I think we've got a good respect, a good respectful board. And, you know, I'm happy to come in, I, I like coming in. If Denise and I were the only ones here, we could probably make it work. I kind of like the hybrid version that, you know, rotated around, you know, two, two people come in one week and, you know, two others come another time. And, you know, if I travel again or something, you know, I may be asking Courtney to step up. You know, um, I don't have a camera on my computer at home, I don't want one. But that's just me being.
Because we could get you one.
Oh, I'm sure you could. Remember, I'm a lunatic. But the thing is, if everybody else is more comfortable with that, especially with the numbers going up, I too like coming in here, I like seeing everybody in person. That's what, you know, um, but that, that's my two cents worth, and.
Well, it does seem like visually, when you said that, like having you and Denise here and then two, two of us here at a time. Because then it's easy, we got the two tables, you, we don't have to deal with us being here. Maybe that's a good solution.
And I, I think everybody, you know, you know, I, I'm sure you'd all be appalled if I came in coughing and spitting and hacking on the floor.
Yes, we would.
Yeah, but I, I think, like I said, I think anybody, you know, just what Megan was saying, she feels she is a little more exposed, or you know what, she would like to skip the next meeting? You know what, thank you, Megan. I appreciate that, you know?
You'll get to see my face the next. You'll get to see my face the next meeting.
That's right. No mask, right?
Absolutely. You know, and, you know, we've had some pretty good Zoom meetings when we did, you know, we've been doing Police Chief Search. That seems to have worked out pretty well. Nobody gets to see me, but, you know, they work well, so.
Yes.
And then if we had a snowstorm or an impending snowstorm, I'm sure Denise and I can figure out how to keep everybody off the streets and get home and, you know, but if everybody is good with that, I'm good with it. And I'll be looking forward to when everybody's vaccinated and everybody can all be done here in person. So.
Alright, it's a plan.
So if everybody's good with that, do we have another volunteer to take the 14th off?
The eighth. The eighth.
I'm actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna visit family and I'm gonna be driving, but, you know, I'll see people that are outside of my usual group, you know, circle, so.
Okay, so that makes sense. Okay, alright.
So you're good with being in here? And the other thing is, if you don't feel comfortable at that point, zoom in.
Right.
You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to beat up anybody or even think about it if somebody doesn't feel safe coming in, you know, given this.
I'll be happy to stay at home for the meeting on the 22nd.
You're looking into January already?
Even have that.
Are we having a meeting on the 22nd?
December?
The 22nd of what? December?
December. Do we have a second meeting in December?
No, we're not doing a meeting in.
Unless there's one that's needed.
So yes, you can stay home. So yes, you can stay home.
You know, you'll be going nuts that night looking for the Zoom in information. Oh, I, I.
I'll call you, Jim.
I'll get over it. I'll give it like five minutes. I'll find something else to do.
There you go. Great.
Alright.
Alright.
And then we'll figure that the January meeting and.
Yes.
Jim and Ellen can take it off.
Sure.
Or you can do any horse training.
Or we can just, yeah, we can just check in.
Or like I said, anybody who doesn't feel comfortable, don't do it. If you feel sick, don't do it.
Be good, be safe.
January seems like a long way off.
Yep.
Right now.
Yeah.
It's getting closer by the day. And you're good with that, Denise?
Yep.
Alright, then we're into town administrators report.
Okay, I have a few things for you tonight. First, I just wanted to, I think I had to talk to a few of you. So last week I had a tour. I was invited out to Minuteman Vocational High School. I had a tour by the superintendent. It's actually a beautiful facility. If none of you have seen the new school, really is beautiful. It was great to see kids in class. It was great to see the teachers teaching the kids in class and the kids that were remote at the same time through web cameras set up in the classroom. Just, it was just a really, really nice facility. It was well done and I'm sure you all paid a lot of money for that. It was, it's really a beautiful building. I also want to congratulate the superintendent, Bucquilliam, for his recent award. He received an award, and I forget the name of it, but it was a Massachusetts State Award for his longstanding commitment to safety of the students and staff. So it was really well done on his behalf, so. I have exciting news regarding some grants. We were notified yesterday that the acting, that Acting Chief Salisi was awarded $20,577 from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. It's a federal grant that he had applied for back in September to replace some mobile computers and radar equipment. So he did not receive the full request. I think it was $6,000 short from what he actually requested. So he will be requesting the additional funding in, likely in his budget request, but that's great, so we'll get a jump on that. And just before the meeting tonight, I was notified that we were awarded the permitting fee money that I requested from the Community Compact Grant. So that is for hardware and software to implement the online permitting in several departments, including the Building Department, the Board of Health, the Fire Department, and the Town Clerk. That award was $8,000 less than what we requested, so if we can account for that in the budget, we will add the annual licensing through the Selectmen's Office as another module. But that will really be huge here. It will allow for automatic sign-offs. People will be able to apply for those permits and licenses 24/7. They'll be able to pay online. So it really will bring us, you know, close to the 21st century with our technology. So that's really great.
How much was it altogether?
So I had requested $48,000. They gave us $40,000.
Great.
Awesome.
That's very good.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes. So that was fantastic. They actually, they reached out to me a few weeks ago and asked if we had to go with all of it or if they could give us that. We're actually targeting like $25,000. And I told them that we really couldn't proceed unless we have, you know, at least $40,000. They gave us the $40,000, which is great. I spoke to Senator Eldridge last week. He is looking to put together a walking tour of Lower Village with the board, myself, himself, and Representative Cogan. He'd like to see the work that was done, talk about some grant opportunities. We did obviously talk about the time of year, but he said if we could find a nice day that we could make work.
He's planning on having the town planner in as well, or just the board?
He really didn't mention, but we could certainly invite other folks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would just have Jesse involved, just because he was so integral, obviously, to that project.
Yeah, that's fine. So I don't know if that's something the board, again, we're kind of, our numbers are going up and I'm not sure if we really want to have a group walking around, but I told him I would speak to the board and get back to him.
So for that, I would be happy to, considering I was on the planning board at that point and I'm now here, so I feel like I could sort of do double duty, as long as it's outside. Yes, okay, sorry.
That's okay. So if that's something the board would like me to try and arrange, I can certainly do that.
When I hear grants, I'm like, yeah, let's talk them.
We like honey.
Okay, I will get some dates and put it out to the board and see when they're available. The Police Chief Search Committee is moving along quite nicely. We have scheduled in-person interviews and hope to have a short list of finalists to this board on, at the next meeting, December 8th.
Wow.
We are. It's a really good group, actually, and the candidates are just phenomenal. So we, just so that you're aware, we reviewed resumes. We sent out 10 questions and had them respond to questions formally. Then we reviewed those questions and narrowed it down once again to our next list to bring in in person. So I would ask the board to think about when you would like to schedule interviews. If we have the list for the 8th, you know, we could certainly do a Saturday morning. Or we could potentially, you know, if the board's available to start at 6 o'clock, we could do three interviews on a weeknight. So think about that. We'll get back on the 8th and figure out how many we plan to present to you, and we can formally talk about that. But that's very exciting. PFAS. So we had our meeting today of our PFAS working group, I guess. We have selected an engineering firm that we would like to move forward with, so I will be reaching out to them. It's funny, I was not wowed by their written proposal, but I actually really enjoyed their in-person meeting. I thought they did a very well-done presentation. They had phenomenal references. I spoke to many of the town administrators that they worked with. They were very responsive. They were very hands-on. They communicated well. They're a small company, eager to get the work versus the two, we have a smaller company and a larger firm. I think we all sort of like the hands-on approach that the smaller company will take. So we do plan to reach out and they seem very eager to start once we have a contract going. So I think we will get that project underway relatively quickly. There's still some technicalities to be worked out on the state level. This, right now, the DEP is still handling the project. They will have to formally give us a letter of responsibility and hand it off to us. We believe the state was waiting for us to hire the firm room because they didn't want to just leave it. So we do expect to get that letter probably in the beginning of the year. The GZA report regarding the Fire Academy. So I did read through this again. I would recommend that we do bring in or ask GZA to attend maybe a January meeting to discuss it more in depth. After speaking with Kathy and reading the report more thoroughly, I mean, there's good news and bad news in the report. The good news, obviously, human exposure is generally low. They don't expect much human exposure at the site. The water storage tank on-site was replaced. The sediment was excavated. But regarding White Pond, every sample they took of surface water PFAS was, it was positive for PFAS. The good news is when they checked the sediment in the adjacent areas to White Pond, it was negative. It did not show any PFAS. So they do feel that it's limited to White Pond and sort of obviously areas of the academy. They are still working, they're working on a Phase 2 project. So I think, you know, having a more formal presentation might be helpful. Additionally, I got word last week that PFAS has been discovered at the Glissadale Mill area. So the report came in, it appears based on the findings that were put on the DEP's website that they were not pleased with the initial engineering report and have sort of pushed it back to them for more action to be taken, more samples to be taken, more communication to be taken. So that project is ongoing. Again, I would recommend we ask both of these engineering firms to come in and give us an update on what's going on with their respective projects and PFAS. I think it's important to have that public discussion so that the residents that are impacted have some understanding and knowledge, and obviously that the board does as well. As Tom mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, so COVID cases are increasing. I had a long meeting today with our health agent, and he and the area boards of health have pretty much determined that it is public gatherings that are causing the numbers to increase. He has stated that it's becoming harder and harder for agents to conduct the contact tracing because there are so many levels of contacts that are taking place right now. So the calls that they're making are far outweighing the staff. They have to make those calls. So again, I just want to urge folks to stay vigilant. Try and, I know it's hard, I know it's hard during the holidays, but do your best. Stay in small groups, social distance. If you need to be around folks, keep six feet between you. Make sure both parties are wearing a mask. It is, it's a little alarming across the state to see the numbers increasing so dramatically. And, you know, even here in Stowe, we're seeing numbers jump up, so please take precautions. I would like to thank Maureen. My three months here, she's been wonderful. It's been great with her getting me on board and showing me where things are and letting me know sort of all the secrets in town. So I will miss, I will miss you greatly, but I do wish you nothing but the best in your next venture. And then I just wanted to wish the board and our residents a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope everyone celebrates safely and, you know, I hope everyone has a happy and relaxing few days.
Thank you. Thank you.
Start with you, Megan.
Start with me. Trittown, we already talked about.
There's like nothing else.
Don't want to re-look at it.
What else? Oh, well, I don't want to take perambulation away from Ellen. But I did climb down a hill, like hang off the side of it.
We'll post the pictures.
What else? The school committee? I'm still just talking, I mean, all of my reps have been talking.
You don't have to, if you.
I don't have anything, I have nothing to report, actually.
Alright.
I did Trittown, we can skip the rest of everything.
I'm more impressed with, everything's going good.
Everything is fine. I have no issues right now.
Ellen?
Mostly, I missed most of, well, let's see, Recreation hasn't met, but they do have two programs they're doing virtually in December. Chess for kids, this is like for upper elementary ages, which apparently is booming because of the new series on Netflix, which I find interesting. And then a class on Home Alone for kids also in that age group who I guess want to learn. I don't know if it's for the kids or if the parents.
No, it's for the kids.
It's for the kids, right, about being responsible if you're gonna be home alone. So, so that's, people should just check the Recreation website if they haven't heard about that already. Council on Aging, I was unfortunately, couldn't make their meeting, but just a couple of the reminders is they wanted to make sure, remember that Smod is still offering the rental assistance for people who might be starting to feel the financial pressures of not, you know, everything that's going on, that money's still available, so they should contact Smod. I think, was there anything else on COA? I think that's primarily, Denise, did you actually go to the meeting? Or do they, they had a report about you, but I wasn't sure, I mean, I think Allison was reporting on a meeting with you, but I wasn't.
If there was a recent COA meeting.
No, just recently, just so. And, yeah, and perambulation, so we've had two days now. We actually, we got to go to, for Julian's without being run off the property. That was really exciting. They were actually quite lovely about it and welcoming us, and that's where Megan climbed down a steep embankment in order to paint this dome.
That we found in the embankment.
Yeah, so we will need to, we're hoping to pick up the speed a little bit to try to get some more of the borders, the boundary markers done before it gets too cold to be out there, but it's still as much fun as I remember. So if you guys want to join us, just let me know.
It's been cold.
It was, Saturday was actually perfect weather.
Actually, the two days that we've had, it's been two beautiful days.
And it's, and you might have noticed in correspondence that both Maynard and Sudbury have been shamed into getting into the, into perambulation now, so. The Maynard's will get it all done in one day, and I'm like, no kidding, but they only do the corners.
They only do the corners.
So, so anyway, so it's fun.
Courtney?
I finally made it to an EDIC meeting and it's a fairly technical group, so I was just kind of listening and absorbing a lot. But it was a fair amount of talk, of course, pretty much about Lower Village. You know, concern about having spaces in the, in the plot, in the shopping plaza itself and the linear property not being filled. And there was actually, I'm not specifically answering, asking for an answer to this, but there was, you know, talk about if there was a way to give linear any kind of a tax break so that they could pass that savings on to the tenants and not charge us high rents. I almost kind of said, well, we just got the one tax rate, you know, so, but I don't, anyway. So that was, that was something that was part of the conversation. I guess the planning board has hired a firm to look at the zoning in Lower Village. So that was part of the conversation in EDIC. And they're gonna have a zoning strategy workshop as well. So kind of a lot, just, you know, this is what this committee's supposed, figuring out how to, to get it to be more vibrant and get it to work. It was a brief discussion on mixed use, you know, having residential units down there. But I see these are all kind of long conversations that, as I get it better, I'll say more.
I forgot to talk about Town Hall Restoration. Do you want to talk about it, or do you want me to?
It would be great if you would, because I was unable to be in that meeting that night. I was in another meeting.
The, so the Town Hall Restoration Subcommittee, or Committee is going to be meeting with, they're on our agenda for December 8th. They'll be zooming in for that call. And so they will be, I guess the reason that they are coming on is because they want to get our feelings on potential easements because of the VFR system that needs to be put on to, or that we're thinking about putting into the building. And so also, the Town Hall Restoration Committee is working on getting the CPC proposal done for the December 1st deadline. So, so those are two things that are happening that I forgot to mention.
So going back to CPC, they're meeting again the night before our next meeting, so first week of December. Town Hall Restoration Committee is, is going to be applying for funding for the project because they want to have the cycle. because they want to have the cycle move along. And so even though we just got design funds and hiring the architect, you know, they want to have that application in now, so they may move along with it. And the other application that'll be going to CPC, as we said earlier tonight, is for some funding for Kane Land Project. And that, I think, is all I have to report.
You do?
Very briefly, I don't have that much to report. Lake Hack met and they continue to talk about the ascertainment document and their negotiation strategy for Kane Land. You may have seen some technical correspondence about Kane Land. Ascertainment document, again, is sort of the wish list that they, they come up with. It may be equipment for public access, it may be equipment for improved cable access, but it's essentially your opening bid and it's what you negotiate with the company. A highly, highly, highly technical discussion that I understood very little of, but a lot of people on the committee understood much more. Their attorney seems good. He certainly has a technical background that he brings to bear. And the library has confirmed, I think there've been some conversations with you, Denise, we will not be bringing something at annual town meeting on the building renovation. They're gonna be, trustees will be using some of the extra time to revisit their needs document, not just using the one from eight, nine years ago. I think that's a very good move. And Denise has been helpful, sort of massaged the RFR, which I think is in good shape, except that it needs, the needs statement.
Yes, but they had to cancel their meeting on Thursday for technical difficulties.
They had another meeting scheduled at the same time, they only have one Zoom account or something, I don't know.
Yes, they had a program taking place and, so they could not use the same Zoom account and there was some miscommunication with the IT department here to provide an alternate account for them to use. So we have clarified that going forward.
Okay. And they have not rescheduled that, surprisingly. So anyway, that's all I have.
All right. I'll be quick. Police, fire, highway are doing well. I attended Board of Health meeting and I must say that the Board of Health was very happy to see Denise there. I think you guys all saw the press release that came out about COVID and the guidelines. That was a, I believe, a direct result of Denise attending that meeting and offering help, you know, as far as getting out the message and things like that. I think it was a very good conversation. Like I said, I think the Board of Health was very, very happy that Denise showed up. Not so much me, but Denise, they were definitely happy with. But, you know, the three lady, ladies that are on there, they run a tight ship and they had some good discussions. I, I stayed for the whole meeting, you know, I found out more about well placement and subject systems than I actually wanted to, but it was good and I, you know, but really the big takeaway was they were happy to have Denise and have her help getting out the message. So that's all I've got.
I just remembered, which, you went to Minute Man, but they did, the last meeting we had, we heard the presentation on the fields and their school committee did vote unanimously to support the financing for that, so.
Yes, so I have that on your December 8th agenda to discuss how the board wishes to proceed.
Okay, great.
Well, I have one more thing. I just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays, be safe and have a good time and be smart. So, that being said, I am, unless Denise has anything or anybody else has it?
We still have.
We still have minutes.
Minutes, I'm trying to get.
I know, you thought we were done, but.
Minutes.
See what happens when we move it to the end.
I know.
You're used to getting it all done. At the end, you're like, okay, whee.
All right, we have the minutes of 11:10, 2020. Anybody have any comments on those?
On the, I'm sorry, I don't have a page number. Where the, where the discussion of the liquor license application for NANS Market, a motion was made and it says, I move. So means that who is I? That's all I got.
All right.
Page three.
Yes.
Page three.
Yeah, I had picked up on that one, too. One thing I picked up on, I think, is Jim and Courtney, you were both here, right, in person?
It said that, I thought.
No.
Presumably a Zoom.
No, I was here.
You were both here last year.
You were making motions.
Okay, yeah, I was. Okay, that was a different one.
That was the meeting, you were looking over my shoulder at my laptop.
That was the last, the last meeting.
Just so you know, I'm sorry.
Both of you guys were here.
I'm over here. Just let me know if you want to.
First page under chairman's comments, last sentence, asked anyone considering showing up or to run, not, not to do so, not to go to the park. You know?
You can still run, you just can't.
You just can't go to the park. One thing that I wanted to see clarified a little bit is under the public hearing, the, I think, fourth, for the NANS Market, the fourth or fifth line down. I, I wanted to see it clarified on what the licenses were for because Mr. Mack explained the request for Section 12, all, all liquor, Section 12, all liquor licensed to serve alcohol, which was on premises, I believe. And then the 15 was to sell wine and malt for off-premises consumption. But I think it just could be cleaned up just a, just a hair. I can give you this after Maureen. And then who moved it and that was all I had.
I just want to comment, I liked having the list at the bottom, not only with the YouTube link, but with the documents that were referenced it. It just seems like, especially with that meeting, particularly with the licenses, it was nice to have that reminder, like, if you need to look for other stuff, that's what you look for, you know? Thank you for doing that.
I think Maureen's been doing that for a while.
Yeah, I hadn't, maybe I just hadn't noticed. Maybe I didn't get that far enough.
The documents are actually up in the meeting.
Are they? Have they been there every time? And I've just, I've never noticed.
It's been a recent open meeting law addition, two, last five years.
Five years.
No, perhaps.
Yeah, only five years.
But, but not the YouTube link.
No, well, we didn't have a lot of YouTube.
I'm willing to take a motion.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the November 10th, 2020 meeting as amended.
Second. All in favor? All right, now we.
Seven minutes again.
Oh, correspondence.
Oh, see, you knew we are trying to just.
There were a couple pieces of correspondence I just wanted to bring up because I've kind of dealt with them already. There was a foreclosure notice in there. I've talked to Maureen about it, she'd already sent it off to Planning Board, but I've also asked her to send a copy of it to Smod to make sure that they were aware. Also asked Denise to kind of keep an eye on it so that we don't, because it doesn't specifically say that it's an affordable unit, but the way the lawyer's letter was written, it said we had an interest in it. So I figured that it probably is one of the affordable units.
It is, it's come up before.
There was also a letter in there from KT Law about tolling provisions going away for certain things as of December 1st. And they were just notifying us. I talked to Denise about it and I was concerned that it might be one of the ones for, you know, that might have affected Halix Point. And Denise has looked into it and it is not that it relates to some other stuff that I think Denise probably understands more than I do, but my main concern was with rising numbers, all of a sudden maybe being forced into a town meeting. It was a letter from KT Law.
Second course. Yeah, I'm trying to find it. I think it was in the second course warrants. So it does impact our zoning board and many of their public hearings, but it does not affect the Chapter 61 and Halix Point timelines.
Essentially, what I got out of it was that, you know, there, a number of other issues had been told that they didn't have to deal with. And now with, because they can't hold certain public hearings via Zoom, the thing I saw was you can, if you don't have the capability to Zoom meetings and things like that, you could ask for a waiver on it. But I think they're figuring that at this point, everybody's figured out how to use Zoom. So what they're doing is they're pulling back some of the stuff that, and that actually is, takes effect on December 1. So it was very quick and it seemed to be a surprise even to the lawyers that, I guess it got stuck into the budget bill.
So it wasn't Correspondents' Two, Fifth, Fourteenth?
Yeah. I just looked over.
Those are the two I just wanted to bring up that I'd already talked to Denise about.
I, I just had one question and I think it was sort of answered on the note on the applicant or the interest in the cultural council, that we require, you have to be a registered voter, is that right?
So I certainly, I don't see why she couldn't be, you know, just attend meetings and participate as an active resident, but yes, in order to be on a committee here, we do require them to be registered voters.
Is that partly a provision of the open meeting law, sort of, you know?
Yep. So it's.
It's just our own.
It seems to me there was some committee that we actually, that we waived that or something, we did something different, but I can't remember what it was.
We did for the police chief search committee because we had individuals who don't live in town. But we changed it years ago on one committee from, I don't know, oh, we talked about voter versus resident.
Yes.
Yeah, I feel like that would exclude a lot. I mean, there are people here who are on their green cards who can't vote. They're, you know, they're still here paying taxes, they just can't.
I think this is.
They're not registered to vote.
I think this is.
Yeah, I think it's an agenda item, for sure, yeah.
So if there isn't anything else, I'll entertain that motion I was looking for 10 minutes ago.
I move, we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, and have a lovely holiday.